Guys, are you ready? Everybody, please mute your phones before we get started. Any call to order, this is the May 20th, 2025 council meeting for the Borough of Oakland. Would the clerk please read the statement of complaints?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the open public's meeting law, duly announced, advertised, and posted in the municipal building. The meeting will adjourn at 10:00 PM unless the majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time.
Thank you. All right, sir, Pledge of Allegiance. I'll have soon-to-be chief lead salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a quick moment, Syle. Please, even, thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Kamala?
Here.
Council President McCann?
Here.
Councilman Pignatelli?
Here.
Councilwoman Rose?
Here.
Councilman Saliani?
Here.
Councilman Slasinski?
Here.
Councilman Talamini?
Here.
All set?
Yep.
All right, so this is a pretty special meeting. We have, we're going to be swearing in our new chief and other subordinate officers. At this time, we have four ordinance, 25-161 to authorize promotion of Captain Timothy Keenan to chief. We have 25-162 to authorize Lieutenant Michael O'Neil to captain. 25-163 to authorize the promotion of Sergeant Stephen Brock to lieutenant. And 25-164 to authorize promotion of Officer Louis Guevara to sergeant. Do I have a motion to?
I would like to make the motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignatelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Well, with that being said, let's bring up Captain Keenan, and let's get him promoted. All set?
Yep.
All right. "I, Timothy Keenan, do solemnly swear," do solemnly swear, "that I will support," "that I will support," "the Constitution of the United States," "the Constitution of the United States," "and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey," "and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey," "that I will bear," "that I will bear," "true faith," "true faith," "and allegiance," "and allegiance," "to the same," "to the same," "and the governments," "and the governments," "established," "established," "in the United States," "in the United States," "and in this state," "and in this state," "under the authority," "under the authority," "of the people," "of the people," "and that I will faithfully," "and that I will faithfully," "impartially," "impartially," "and justly," "and justly," "perform all the duties," "perform all the duties," "of police chief of Oakland." "of police chief of Oakland." "according to the best of my ability." "according to the best of my ability." "so help me God." "so help me God." Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to ask Mike O'Neil to come forward with his family. All set? Here we go. "I,"
"I, Michael O'Neil,"
"do solemnly swear,"
"do solemnly swear,"
"that I will support,"
"that I will support,"
"the Constitution of the United States,"
"the Constitution of the United States,"
"and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,"
"and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,"
"that I will bear true faith,"
"that I will bear true faith,"
"and allegiance,"
"and allegiance,"
"to the same,"
"to the same,"
"and the governments established,"
"and the governments established,"
"in the United States,"
"in the United States,"
"and in this state,"
"and in this state,"
"under the authority of the people,"
"under the authority of the people,"
"and that I will faithfully,"
"and that I will faithfully,"
"impartially,"
"impartially,"
"and justly,"
"and justly,"
"perform all the duties,"
"perform all the duties,"
"of the office of Oakland captain,"
"of the office of Oakland captain,"
"according to the best of my ability."
"according to the best of my ability."
"so help me God."
"so help me God."
Congratulations. Congratulations. I was going to say, at this time, I asked Stephen Brock, but here he is. What you got with you, Steve? My two daughters. Hold it. All set, Steve? Yes. Okay. "I, Stephen Brock, do solemnly swear," "do solemnly swear," "that I will support the Constitution of the United States,"
"that I will support the Constitution of the United States,"
"and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,"
"and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,"
"and that I will bear true faith,"
"and that I will bear true faith,"
"and allegiance,"
"and allegiance,"
"to the same,"
"to the same,"
"and the governments established,"
"and the governments established,"
"in the United States,"
"in the United States,"
"and in this state,"
"and in this state,"
"under the authority of the people,"
"under the authority of the people,"
"and that I will faithfully,"
"and that I will faithfully,"
"impartially,"
"impartially,"
"and justly,"
"and justly,"
"perform all the duties,"
"perform all the duties,"
"of the office,"
"of lieutenant." "of the office of lieutenant."
"according to the best of my ability."
"according to the best of my ability."
"so help me God."
"so help me God."
Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to invite Louis Guevara up front.
"I,"
"I, Louis Guevara,"
"do solemnly swear,"
"do solemnly swear,"
"that I will support the Constitution of the United States,"
"that I will support the Constitution of the United States,"
"and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,"
"and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,"
"and that I will bear true faith and allegiance,"
"that I will bear true faith and allegiance,"
"to the same,"
"to the same,"
"and the governments,"
"and the governments,"
"established in the United States,"
"established in the United States,"
"and in this state,"
"and in this state,"
"under the authority of the people,"
"under the authority of the people,"
"and that I will faithfully,"
"and that I will faithfully,"
"impartially,"
"impartially,"
"and justly,"
"and justly,"
"perform all the duties,"
"perform all the duties,"
"of the office of sergeant,"
"of the office of sergeant,"
"according to the best of my ability."
"according to the best of my ability."
"so help me God."
"so help me God."
Congratulations.
Okay, that concludes our promotions. I'm sure everybody's riveted and wants to hear the mayor's report, but at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess for those that would wish to celebrate this wonderful day. Do you have a motion to take a five-minute recess?
Some more.
Second. All favor? Meeting's back in order. All right, this time, we're up to the mayor's report. I have a couple items here. Number one, Memorial Day. Join us for the Memorial Day Parade Sunday, May 25th. The parade starts at 1:00 PM, followed by a ceremony at Veterans Park. Also, at 11:00, there's also, the firemen will also have a small memorial service for members of the fire department. Fever pitch is May 31st, starting at 9:00 AM, with the parade celebrating the end of the year baseball and softball season. Everybody just remember, the primary election is up and coming, June 10th. The polls open from 9:00 to 8:00 PM, and early voting begins June 3rd to the 8th. You can visit the Borough.
Polls are open in regular voting from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you. And early voting will begin on the 3rd, ending on the 8th. You can visit the Borough website for more information. Also, for all the kids, the carnival's coming. Save the date, June 18th to the 21st. Wristbands are on sale. You can find the QR code on both the Borough website and Facebook page. The Oakland's Road Program, it's on tonight's agenda to award the bid for the road program for this year. Also, I'm also having out that Oakland has two newly minted Eagle Scouts. We, myself and Captain Councilwoman, attended the ceremony for Jack Worst and William Miles. So, we have two new Eagle Scouts here in Oakland for Troop 49. Also, I'll remind everybody, the outdoor market begins on May 31st from 10:00 to 3:00 PM. People wondering about Yoppo Avenue with the paving, right now, the New Jersey DOT is looking at the plans, the specifications, as currently, they've put their comments on it, and our engineer is going back with their answers to their comments. Patriots Way Bridge update, the deck was poured three weeks ago today. Currently, they're working on the Belgium block curbs and drainage on the west side, that's on the reserve side. They're starting to do grading and preparing the approaches to the bridge to put a base coat of asphalt down, and currently, they're working on the pylons on the four approaches coming into the bridge. And you'll see people working on the rebar for the deck parapet, and you're going to see some grading working taking place for the next couple of weeks. And that's all I have to report. At this time, do I have a motion to open the public?
No.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wish to address the council?
I would just like to remind everyone that on the 25th, we're going to be holding the Memorial Day Parade. Anybody that wants to march is welcome to show up. We'll be down at the corner of Dogwood and Tuotu. Last year, one of the councilmen asked for pins, and I didn't have any with me at the time, so I'm going to do it now. Because when the day comes, I'm busy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dave.
Oh, this is beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for Mr. McCann, because I think he's the one that asked for it last time.
I would also like to give a special thanks to our DPW, because without them, and without our police department, we wouldn't be doing this. And a special thanks to Rich, because he helps me with the insurance, which definitely frustrates me.
It frustrates me, too. You're not alone.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a nice night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to address the governing body?
Thank you. My name's Nikolai Carlson. I live six geronimo away. Here complaining again about oral transfers from domestic violence. Seems to be the mode of operating, and it's the town judge that gives the order for surveillance. So, I was wondering why this is going on? It's going on for 40 years using domestic violence legislation, and I've been tortured. And I need some repose or some... I need something done.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
It's gone on for 40 years. I don't know what, I'm at wits' end. I don't know what to do. And it's all that simple, clear-cut administrative procedure with orders for oral transfers and whatnot. So...
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
If I could get the help of the town council, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Not seeing any, do I have a motion to close?
Some moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got approval of minutes. We've got April 22nd, 2025, do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
April 22nd, 2025, executive minutes. Does anybody have any changes or changes to the minutes? If so, it has to be done in an executive session.
Some moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, I got May 9th, 2025, special meetings. Does anybody have changes to the minutes?
Proved as is.
Proved as is. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're up to special announcements. We have, number one, authorized social affairs permit for the Oakland Fathers Club for a charity barbecue on June 7th, 2020-25, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. Rain date is June 8th, 2025, 3:00 to 7:00 PM at Crystal Lake Beach, 62 Lakeshore Drive, Oakland, New Jersey. We have, also have the National Public Works Week proclamation. Let me read this. Says National... Says National Public Works Week proclamation, May 18th through 24th, 2025. "People's Purpose and Presence. Whereas the public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and serve services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high-quality life and well-being of the people of the Borough of Oakland. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are the managers and employees at all levels of government, and who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Borough of Oakland to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding the importance of our public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Workers Association. Now therefore be resolved, I, Mayor Eric Kamala, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. And witness thereof, I have here on to you, set my hand as cause the seal of the Borough of Oakland, done, the Borough of Oakland, New Jersey, this day, 20, May 2025. Mayor Kamala. So, to all the public and works employees, thank you for everything. Truly, you guys keep the town running, and it shows to the rest. You are the visible side in this borough. Okay. Going back up to the authorized social affairs permit for the Fathers Club, do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got approval of the dog park project for the Girl Scouts. So, let me just read this real quick here. Where was it in the minutes? Got my notes here. So essentially, they want to, the Girl Scouts are seeking permission to undertake a project to improve the dog park. In particular, they would like to person install a bench, construct a lost and found mailbox, and work with the shade tree to plant some new trees down there.
Some moved.
Do I have a second? All favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to appoint Madison Grifredo to the Public Fence Committee. This is mayor's appointment with council consent.
Some moved.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving down to the resolutions. We have 25-165, resolution supporting federal tax exemption for municipal bonds. 25-166, resolution opposing A5757 to 757, authorizing conversion of certain office parks and retail centers to mixed-use developments. 25-167, resolution urging restoration of the energy tax aid. 25-168, authorized cosponsorship agreement between the Borough of Oakland and the Oakland Volunteer Fire Department Association for the 2025 carnival. 25-169, authorize estimated tax bills. 25-170, authorize award of auction bids for the bicycles. 25-171, employment agreement with Chief Keenan. 25-172, authorize refund utility Jacoby. 25-173, authorize recreational fund. 25-174, authorize hire of camp staff. 25-175, authorize purchase of DPW pickup trucks. 25-176, authorize purchase of police cars. 25-177, authorize purchase of body-worn cameras for the police. 25-178, cancel capital balances. 25-179, award 2025 road program. 25-180, authorize shared services agreement with Pompton Lakes for solid waste collection. 25-181, award contract to Basel Engineering for construction inspection of Harvard Way. 25-182, amend electrical and plumbing subcoats stipend. And 25-183, Patriots Way change order number four. Does anybody have, wish to have any pulled out?
Can we pull out 25-183?
183?
We get 169 and 177.
Any others? Not seeing any. With exclusion of 169, 177, and 183, do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignatelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Talamini, 25-169, authorize estimated tax bills.
Just estimated tax bills, that's because the county hasn't struck a number yet?
Right. I don't think they've adopted their budget yet, even if they had. Quite frankly, it takes a while for the county to strike the rate. They never are able to get that done in time for the issuance of the third-quarter bill.
And is this, is this a pain in the neck with, you know, the people that pay their taxes automatically, and do we have issues that...
Well, for anybody that's paying their taxes, let's say through their mortgage company, now, it's pretty seamless to them. They'll get an advice copy of what the estimated tax bill is. For other people, you're not making any more payments. It's more work in-house, because, you know, we have to then calculate the final rate when it struck, do adjustments on the billing, and have that reflected on the fourth-quarter bill. But, you know, is it as clean as doing it normally? No. No, because it's not the final rate. It's an estimate. Usually, you know, we have, we're far enough down the road where the estimates wind up being pretty close, but there's always some adjustments to be made.
So, I mean, the person that comes in and pays their bills by hand, you know, the, I mean, it's just, it might be another, they might get a refund, or they might owe some money after everything's set?
No refund.
Yeah, well, they're going to pay the estimated amount in the third quarter, and then there'll be an adjustment on the fourth quarter.
Okay. And then, all right, so, yeah, so, all right, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 25-169?
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignatelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Slasinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, 25-177, authorize body-worn cameras. Mr. Talamini.
So, we're, like, so what I understand, we're in the middle of the lifetime usage of the cameras, and we're just buying extra, so we're ahead, and we got some grant money for this?
No, we, well, we do have, yes, to the second part of the question. We do have some grant money for this, and some money left over from the original grant we got when the state made it mandatory, as well as some grant money that we were able to secure last year through a federal program. But, no, the original ones that we bought, they're going to be replaced wholesale, or going through a completely different system. The first ones proved to be very, say, not as user-friendly as the system that we're going to, and they were pretty much at the end of their useful life. And this, this purchase includes a refresh halfway through the contract period. And this, this purchase includes a refresh halfway through the contract period.
Okay, so, yeah, so we won't have to be buying all new ones all the time, it'll be staggered, sort of?
This'll be an all-in price, there's five, you know, there's some manual payments involved with the licensing, but this is an all-in price, it basically gets us two rounds of, of cameras, as well as seven new mobile cameras for the patrol vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
How long does this, does this last, to these cameras? What's their lifespan?
The body worn cameras?
Yeah.
Three years, give or take?
Okay.
Mobile cameras somewhat longer.
Any further questions?
No.
All right, do we have a motion to approve twenty-five, one-seventy-seven, authorize purchase of body worn cameras?
So moved.
Second? Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignatelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, twenty-five, one-eighty-three, Patriots Way change order number four, Mr. Salianni.
Yeah, so just wanted, just walk through the change order, please? And cause the reason why?
Sure. So when the bridge was constructed, you know, the pedestrian walkways on the one side of the bridge, right? Right now, the, the railing terminates slightly prematurely, and it needs to be extended on either end to sort of wrap around where the footing of the truss anchors to the abutment of the bridge, to eliminate a potential fall hazard should somebody sort of walk off the pedestrian path.
Yeah, and, and, Mr. Salianni, there's a pretty good-sized gap in there, and it requires, I was talking to the engineer, and some fabrication has to be done by the bridge manufacturer itself, which is gonna attach to the bridge, and then connect to the walkway. So that's, that's really the reasoning behind this.
So, like, how, how come that wasn't picked up in the, in the design?
Yeah, if you look at the letter from John Euchemic regarding this, I'm just gonna read it right from his letter. The required level of detail for the spatial interaction between the approach and bridge pedestrian walkways did not capture the need for this item, it was only during construction that the interaction issue was seen and thus precipitated this change order.
And, and, I guess, so, I mean, the, the bridge, to me, looks pretty much the same as what was there, right? I mean, is, is it?
There's some differences in design, but essentially, it's the same.
So, but, so we didn't have this guardrail at, with the, with the old bridge, I guess?
I don't know that definitively.
But, but there is a pretty substantial
Sure, sure, I understand, it needs to be done, it just, it just seems
It's funny, I had asked the same questions of the engineer, I said, how do we get here, how do we miss this? And they just, you know, as she seemed to let her, let her think, sometimes stuff just happens. Okay.
So a motion to approve twenty-five, one-eighty-three, Patriots Way change order number four.
So moved.
Do you have a second? Roll call.
Council President McCann?
He left.
Okay. Councilman Pignatelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Slusinski?
Yes.
And Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinances, we have twenty-five, Water Capital nine-six-five, replacement of various water mains, Lehigh Way, Mr. Coons, wanna walk the council through this?
Sure, Mayor, if you want, I'll just take all four, I'll just go through with everybody. So the first two that are on the agenda, Water Capital nine-sixty-five and nine-sixty-six, for the most part, those two ordinances will replace the emergency funding authorization you gave at the special meeting earlier, earlier this month, that enabled us to fund the Lehigh Way emergency repairs, which are ongoing now. If you recall, that's the replacement of about four hundred feet of water main, as well as restoration of the damaged road surface as well. What this will do is, it will negate the need to have to fund it in next year's budget, because the original authorization was done via the emergency process, okay? The second thing in Capital nine-sixty-six is for a new Alcatas breathalyzer, and this is something that we had funded originally probably seven, eight years ago, and at that time, the new equipment was not, I guess, certified use, it was challenged legally. It took years to, you sort out and become accepted, and I guess that has finally happened, and we received notice a short time ago that they would like to start deploying these in Bergen County. That's great, except in the interim, because there was such a long delay, we didn't know what was happening, we had rescinded that funding, and said, all right, well, when we get the approval, we'll reauthorize capital funding for the purchase. Well, that, that time is now, and since we were doing this capital ordinance anyway, we would seek funding authorization for the cost at, you know, at this time, and just included it, and that's like twenty-two thousand dollars or so. Water Capital nine-sixty-seven is the normal Water Capital ordinance that we try to do every year, just to keep current with our capital needs. So that's things, in this case, like an Anard system, some electrical repairs, and most significantly, about six hundred thousand dollars in funding for replacement water mains. As you know, we have a fair bit of transite pipe in this community, and we're trying to get that replaced as quickly as, you know, funding and budget constraints will allow. Lastly, is the flood damage prevention ordinance, which we had talked about during workshop at the last meeting. This is a model ordinance put forth by the, by the DEP and FEMA. It's meant to sort of better coordinate the interaction of the various codes that affect flood damage prevention, and does some updating on the calculations and modeling for things like base flood elevation. Since the last workshop, we sent the, or we got approval from the DEP, they had some comments, we reviewed those, and the ordinance that you have before you for introduction is complying with the DEP, and they'll, you know, they'll accept this once it's adopted. So, the adoption date is the, would be the seventeenth, the next meeting, beating the deadline, which is the eighteenth. This is ready for introduction.
Anybody have any questions for the administrator?
Just with the, the water improvements, we, we did the, the filters, the big filters, and I know we, there was, there's a shelf light for the, for the carbon material that's in there. Do, do we have any idea how we're doing, are we, you know, is that something that gets tested or looked at, or, like, is there an alarm that goes off and says, hey, it's time to change?
There's, there's no alarm. It's based on the specifics of, you know, each well is different depending on the amount of flow, the amount of gallons that are passing through the system, the water chemistry itself. We've had no breakthrough yet, we'll know when you get a test result that is something above non-detect. And we're actually working now on putting together a bid that we, that would enable us to buy that material as soon as we need it. And there was, you know, this is part of the, when you say the O and M part of the, of the system, this, that's the O part, the operating part. And so that's funded through the Water OE budget.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else on this side? All right, not seeing any, we'll do this as a consent agenda for the introduction of twenty-five, Water Capital nine-six-five, twenty-five, Capital nine-six-six, twenty-five, Water Capital nine-six-seven, and twenty-five code nine-six-eight. Do you have, who wishes to introduce?
So moved.
Second.
Who would intro, who did the?
Russ.
And who did the second?
Russ.
Russ? Roll call.
Council, Council President McCann left.
Yep.
Councilman Pignatelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, final adoption of public hearing will be on June seventeenth, council meeting. All right, we're, go off to work, work session, Ramapo Indian Hills High School Field Usage Agreement, Mr. Coons.
Okay, so we have two issues for workshop tonight that involve recreation, and I see Mike and Austin are, are here, so they can feel free to chime in if council would like them to do that as well, but I'll give you some brief overviews. The first one is, if you, if you may recall, over the winter, an issue came up with what the high school wanted to charge our wrestling program for the use of their facility, and it was gonna be a big increase. We eventually wound up sitting down with, with members of the administration and board, and, you know, sort of stated our case to them, had, I think, a positive discussion. And the outcome of that was to try to work on some form of agreement that would sort of take the field usage out of the normal permitting process, and come to a shared understanding over the use of each other's facilities. So what you have in the packet is, is a draft of that, that would basically allow reciprocal use without charge, you know, again, under the terms in here, so the wrestling, if I understand correctly, the wrestling program wouldn't be charged anything. And that's sort of in recognition of the fact that right now, we allow use of our fields for their teams and don't charge them the normal-going rate that we would charge a private team as well, much to the school's benefit. So, you know, I, I think that that works favorably for us, we may wanna, you know, and Mike, we can talk, may wanna tweak it a little bit, but I think the basic structure there is workable for, for, you know, certainly from our perspective, I think. Mike, before, and Austin, before I move on, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
No.
Mike, why don't you come up here?
Yeah.
You know the drill, Mike. Name.
Mike, one, you know. Rec Chairman, wrestling was the final straw. We have, we have, we, they use our fields, we use their fields, there's just been, but we keep getting charged, and we don't charge back. And when we got this, it was like three times he came out to use the, the gyms for the wrestling in the wintertime, which was kind of like the final straw. We were prepared to pull everything out of high school, and we were looking for alternative places to do it, so, which just doesn't benefit them in any, any way. And plus, we wanna keep friendship with Indian, I mean, my kids went through Indian Hills. It wasn't just Indian Hills, it's Ramapo, Indian Hills, the whole, the whole district. So this was agreement, we, we sat down with them, and it was, we had a very good meeting, and I actually kind of laid it out, it was, you know, it was kind of like broke the tariffs, and I, I'm comfortable with, with the, with what was written.
What's the final game, we won't charge you, you don't charge us?
Correct.
We've never charged them.
We've never charged them, yeah.
I'm just
I mean, they, they need the fields, they called me up and say, we wanna do something, something, go, 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 go use it, but
So all the tariffs are coming down?
All tariffs are coming down.
Beautiful.
Well, if you guys approve.
Any further questions?
Mike, you might, you may wanna stand, you're gonna talk tennis courts and tennis badges, and all of that stuff. So the second matter, and I, I know some of you are aware of this, we've had issues pretty much every season with people using the tennis courts that don't have a badge. And I don't just mean playing tennis, but doing things that they're not supposed to, on the courts, riding bikes. A couple of years ago, we had one guy that didn't live in town, that literally took a snow blower to the tennis court surface, because he was able to get in there, and it was the wintertime, and he still wanted to play it, could you not? So, this is meant to sort of give some more teeth and be a little bit more strict with access to the courts, and repercussions to those that may buy a badge, but then are giving it to their kids, giving it to friends, and you have all these other people that wind up being on the courts that aren't supposed to be on the courts. You know, the badge revenue helps support the maintenance of the courts. You know, it's put to good use, we, we had an increase this year for the first time in
Two thousand and ten.
Fifteen years. So, you know, it's still a really good value if, if you use the courts, but it was, it was sort of, you know, being abused and causing problems down there. So what we'd like to do is add language that specifically says, hey, if you are on the, you know, on the courts without a badge, you know, you may not be able to stay on the courts. If, you know, you have a badge and you're giving out that code and letting people use it that shouldn't be using it, you, you're subject to revocation of your badge, and you're gonna lose the privilege of, of being on the courts. And it would carry a potential, you know, fine with it as well.
This is a large issue. Recreation of town invested a lot in these new courts. We have, now we have the pickleball courts, and from my understanding, is that there are pickleball groups, and they're just passing the code around to towns, and I mean, this morning, Jimmy had to fix, because someone was sitting on the new pickleball nets. This is an issue. A couple of years ago, there was a fistfight on the courts, I had to call the police. And when they went down there, and I asked them, when they were, when they broke the fight up, I said, could you just please just check to see if they got badges? They refused to do so, because there's no ordinance on it. So basically, you know, there's no teeth at all, you can go out, like, legally, you can go on the courts with or without, but we would like to be with, because all, all recreation participants pay some kind of a capital fee. This is just tennis, just doing its part, paying a capital fee, and so it goes into our infrastructure, and the infrastructure for the, for the tennis courts. So, we're just asking for some teeth, so that we have the ability to remove somebody if they don't belong there. It's not fair to someone who's paid and someone who has not paid, it's not fair for these things, these numbers we pass around on, on these, you know, on these chat rooms. So, we're just asking for some teeth in it, so we can have these, some enforcement.
So obviously, you had input into this, so you satisfied with the way that the draft is right now?
Yeah, we're gonna draw the original draft, yeah.
If I, if I might, I would suggest that when we do pass this officially, that a sign be put up near the gate, saying, you know, you give it, your code out, or revocation of yours, plus a two-hundred-dollar fine, I think it is. So I think we should put a sign up, so that people know, in red.
Yeah, I'm all with that, yeah.
So, and when they sign up, this would be on the
The gates.
But also, when you sign up online, this would be there too?
Yeah.
This is part of the message.
We have a warning.
Is there an agreement on the community pass, that they have to check off?
There isn't right now, because they're on our teeth.
But they, but they will be.
We put teeth in it, there will be, yes.
That was the question I was asking.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Well, is it something that you can, I'm sorry, is this something that you can change the code periodically?
We do, but then they go, oh, blast it around, and they change it. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The second's change your social media.
So, Mike, if you're satisfied with this, Mr. Coons, is, is this in good enough form to introduce tonight as an ordinance for introduction?
No.
No?
Too bad there isn't something that, let's say there's nobody on the courts, and I wanna go use it. I have to put my code into a box?
It's the code. Now, we've talked about having individual codes, but just the, the code, you just go in, you just put the code in, you just open it up.
Kind of saying, if you, you could track it, then you would know who gave it out.
That's what, meeting before, one of our commissioners, Mike Bleeder, came up with an idea, discussed that, that's something we could work on, but first, we need teeth, otherwise
Great, I agree.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, we talked about the potential viability of using, like, a key fob system that gets issued pretty much as your badge, you know, that, that sort of a thing, that carries its own implementation cost with it. I think the thought was, you know, let's try this sort of approach first, see where that gets us.
It's gonna, yeah, we've got a lot of money.
The pickleball nets were broken up the first week it was open.
Mr. Wall, if you're gonna speak here, come up here.
Oh, sorry.
So, yeah, like you said, it was the first week, I sent you pictures, because pictures presented many of, of the mess, the trash, and today, again, the, so, I could be the dead horse, we could, we could
All right, so, so you're comfortable with this?
I'm very comfortable with it.
Okay. And I, and I just wanna say, Mr. Wall, you know, when we attended that meeting with the new superintendent, it is refreshing to have a new superintendent at, at the regional high school, and she was very supportive in working together with the borough of Oakland to really drop these artificial barriers that were in place.
Everybody, everybody there was, was all on board.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's the same taxpayer, same taxpayer, we're picking their pocket here and charging them over here.
It seemed that it was just basically, five-bit term of bureaucracies, and people just moving things around, not realizing the grand effect it would have, and they were kind of surprised, some of them were kind of surprised there.
So it was very positive, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other comments on the work session? No? Okay, moving on to new business, anybody on the council have any new business? Old business? All right, we'll go for the council liaison reports.
All right, so rec, we'll start with rec. The parade is going to be on, uh, you have three-thirty, I thought, three-thirty, it's six-thirty, no, five-thirty-one. Five-thirty-one, yeah.
Pick a number.
Five-thirty-one. That's always a fun parade. The mayor will be down there, he'll throw out the first pitch, or the last pitch of the season. It's always fun seeing all the, all the softball and baseball kids in their uniforms, and, and just watching them, and, and seeing the kids that you coached over the years, it's a lot of fun. And then, there's gonna be a home run derby fundraiser on six-six, that's always fun to watch Tom Larson hitting all the home runs, and, and what you call, and then, and then you get to watch the girls, Ally, Ally Babino, she, she, she hit a whole bunch of home runs, she was great. And then, so Summer Day Camp is still open, you can register, and the, the open, the open, oh, the open camp is closed, and all summer camps are still open, and then, other than that, I am good, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Pignatelli?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The only announcement I have is, we're still looking for someone to volunteer for the environmental commission. If you have an interest in the environment, and you have some ideas that you'd like to share with them, please come. You can get online the form and volunteer to be on the environmental commission. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Salianni?
From the Flood Commission, I was lucky enough to walk with the Flood Commission, we actually walked the river from Glen Gray down to Lenape Lane. We do it every year, look through, see if anything's blocking the river. We do it every year, look through, see if anything's blocking the river, myself, Tony Schmidt, and Steve, Steve, I'm sorry, his name, forget that. Steve, thank you. There's nothing to report, but we do it every year, see if anything's blocking the river. It's a good time, and the Flood Commission is looking for new members. Just to reiterate, Mayor, what I think you said, and the name said, Memorial Day Parade is Sunday, May 25th, at 1:00 PM. The parade route, the parade route is Ramapo Valley Road from Dogwood to Oak Street, looking forward to seeing everyone in attendance. And then, just a reminder that the carnival starts on June 18th, again, as everyone touched, and also, I want to, Mayor, as you stated, reiterate the update from the Fire Department. The Fire Department will be held, will be having their annual memorial service to honor deceased members of the Oakland Fire Department, starting at 11:00 AM at Company One on Yoppo, on Yoppo Avenue, on Sunday. Thank you very much.
All set?
Yes.
Good. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. From the library, this Sunday, May 25th, at 3:00 PM, the OPL will host classical guitarist Alfredo Festa live on the library stage. The library is closed on Memorial Day, but on Thursday, May 29th, at 6:30, they welcome Dr. David Caspar, philosophy professor at Rutgers University, for a riveting discussion about Stoicism. On Monday, June 2nd, at 10:00 AM, they have another favorite foreign film featuring the Japanese movie Like Father, Like Son. And on Tuesday, June 3rd, at 6:00 PM, Yoga with Sonia returns for a six-week engagement. The children's department continues its weekly storytimes, however, there is no storytime this Friday, May 23rd. The following Friday, May 30th, they have the popular Jiggly Wiggly musical program for children at 11:00 AM. And to register for these programs and for more information, visit their website or call the library at 201-337-3742. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The Satrie Committee met on May 5th, the Arbor Day event went very well. The committee has been recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation for their unwavering commitment to the planting, care, and celebration of trees. By prioritizing tree stewardship, they have not only helped enhance Oakland's beauty and livability, but they also invested in a healthier, more sustainable future for our residents. The Forester put in 54 hours, 37 permits were issued, 85 trees removed, and 26 were replaced. Access Row met on May 7th, we were all set for the carnival for Saturday, June 21st, from 2:30 to 4:30 PM. This event is only for this, you know, mainly for the special needs, so it doesn't have all the sights and sounds, but the carnival will run its normal schedule from June 18th through June 21st. Arts Committee met yesterday, the Arts Market will start on Saturday, May 31st. It is no longer every Saturday, but will be every other Saturday through November 15th. We will be working with the American Legion to create a mural for their building, more details to follow, but any artists willing to participate in the project are welcome to contact the committee. The juried art exhibition and sale went very well, and looking forward to doing it again next year. The committee is in desperate need of volunteers, as with all of our committees, to assist with, you know, planning and running their events for music and arts. You do not have to be an artist or musician to join the committee, and trust me, I don't have talent in either one of those. If you are a musician who would like to perform at one of our events, please reach out to the committee, which is listed on our website. That's it.
That's it? Okay. All right, we're up to bills to be paid.
Bills to be paid, $948,864.28.
So moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Not seeing any.